Any order? I need a motion to appoint Dr. Obleski Secretary of Pro-Dam.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mr. Starber?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call. Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mrs. Taliani?
Here.
Mr. Murbach?
Here.
Dr. Lynch?
Here.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Here.
Mr. Pacheto?
Here.
Dr. Starber? That works too, though.
Yes.
Okay.
The purpose of this budget hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to ask questions or comment on proposed fiscal year 2024 LP district budget and the fiscal year 2024 LP ACC budget. Does anyone from the public wish to comment or ask a question? Hearing no questions, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mrs. Starber?
Yes. Like called meeting the order, the regular board meeting for Wednesday, September 20th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mrs. Taliani?
Here.
Mr. Murbach?
Here.
Dr. Lynch?
Here.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Here.
Mr. Pacheto?
Here.
Mr. Starber?
Here. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone here this evening, all our guests. First order of business, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, August 16th, 2023, and a special board meeting, August 23rd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mrs. Starber?
Yes. Under recognitions and comments, we have no public comment this evening. Division Spotlight tonight is on our special education program, Mrs. Christie Witt and our, you know, Sippin' Savor Coffee Shop, and this through our transition program, which is one of many of great success stories we have, and we really want to bolster here at Opey High School. They have done an awesome job, and I am really looking forward to tonight's presentation. Mrs. Witt?
All right, guys, you ready? Why don't you guys stand right here? Okay, so we went a little old school tonight with our boards, so we'll try to make it the best we can probably see. But pictures is what we function best with, huh, guys? All right, well, first of all, just to echo what Mr. Starber said, thank you guys so much for these opportunities, not only our program, but the ability for us to make these work experiences like the Cabs Sippin' Savor is phenomenal. I mean, there are many stops and saying coffee shops, businesses throughout, but ours is, I'm gonna be biased, ours is the best. And it is the best because it is 100% student-led. From the day that we did the proposal, which I'll talk about, to them ordering the materials, communicating with people, ordering, doing the serving and stuff, and they'll share to you how the numbers have just gone up and up and up, the more that we continue to do our business. So, we're gonna start out, I'm gonna start out and get everybody going, so we can shake the nerves down. We're pretty hyped, really excited to talk to you guys all tonight. And why don't you come stand on this side of me? Eric, why don't you come stand over here by M's that we have more room? Mikey, why don't you step a little bit to the side, okay? Back by Mike? Perfect. I don't take you guys completely out, but that way we can, everybody can see what we got going on. I guess it could be a Vanna, too, if we need to. I know, you already know it, though. You're all good. Here, come on, step right this way a little bit, like, you're gonna sit on Mr. There. So, we all started this last year. This has been a year and a half in progress. So, last fall, we finally decided, okay, COVID's about over, we can move on with things, and we're gonna get going. So, we spent the whole first semester, the first four weeks, discussing different types of businesses, what's some different opportunities, what's a good idea and what's not a good idea. And we threw out everything from buying crickets, to making materials, to doing drinks, and they finally decided that we wanted to make drinks, right?
Right.
Because everybody wants a...
Lemonade.
They want the lemonades. Yes, that is our popular one right now is the lemonades. So, you know, usually we buy so many garments and cards and stuff, but everybody wants a drink to have, to get their day going and to sip and stuff. So, that's where we dig.
Coffee.
And our coffees. Those are our big ones. So, the students, again, everything I talk about and everything they talk about is 100% student-led, with the prompting and the education, the research, the putting it together. So, we put together a proposal, they made a lovely PowerPoint, I just, as a visual up here, we did it. We set up a meeting with Mrs. Judas, and Mrs. Cushion, Dr. Obleski, and I think that was it. At the meeting, and they got up and they pitched it and they did their thing, and it was wonderful. It was a fantastic experience.
A book cup?
Huh?
A book cup?
Yes, we talked about all that.
A dice?
Yes, we're gonna talk, in the pictures here in the corner, you could see different equipments and supplies that we did. The foundation provided us around $3,000 or so to get our entire program up and running, from buying the machines to getting our initial starting product. So, that was extremely helpful, and we are very, very fortunate to have such a resource here at LP. I can't say that enough. So, then we went through that, so once we got that in, we got ourselves going, then it went on to our logos. What is this place gonna be called? They went and did research on catchy names, what's this, what's that? We probably, what, Eric, what did we come up with, four or five different names?
Yep.
And then you guys voted on it?
Yeah.
And then what was the winner? What's our place called? Cabs?
Cabs Sippin' Savor.
Cabs Sippin' Savor. So, I mean, that was, for whatever reason, this Sippin' Savor stuck, and that's what they love, and that's what we are known by. So, then it went to creating it. Again, student-led, the students, each of them created their own logo, and then we voted on it. And this is the one that stuck, and that won. It's simple, it's to the point, and went with it. So, again, pulling more resources, and we have the technology coach, Amy Graham, who has been our best friend through this entire process. We could not do this without Mrs. Graham. She came over several times to the house, sat with us, and created a computer program that allows teachers to order directly online. So, they can do the online ordering, we get it through the computer, we fill it out, and we go forth. She also went and was like my right-hand man, I told her what I wanted, she's much faster at the computer stuff than I am, and created our order forms. And what they are, is they're all picture? I'll take one off so we can kind of pass around, or we can see. What is it? It's our order form. You know? This is a teacher one. She helped us create the order forms, and it's all pictures, so that way, whether we are a reader or a non-reader, we can all be independent and be able to function and do what we need to do. They look overwhelming, but these guys are whizzes at me, they want to read them and do it, right? You're so fast, so fast. That's through that I have to search and look. So, they have, this year we have two forms for teachers. The one that's going around is our coffees and our teas, our herbal teas. Teachers are spoiled and have lots and lots of choices. What all can the teachers order, guys? They can get lemonades, sweet teas.
Unsweet tea.
Unsweet tea. Coffee. Eric, what's the other thing, what do a lot of teachers like to make?
Ice cup.
Lattes. Lattes. We make a lot of lattes for the teachers. So, as you can see on that sheet, that's a teacher order form and all the choices that they get. So, we went through, Mrs. Graham helped us design, ah, we went through all of that process to create everything. And then, we also were able to, I'm gonna butcher the name, the printing, there's a printing company here in town. Mr. Baker, help me.
NCS.
Yes, NCS, totally blank. NCS is a huge supporters of us. We designed our, what, Peyton?
Club?
Our punch cards. Teachers are able to buy a $10 punch card, and they get $12 worth of punches. The way this works is they buy the card, and then they place their order online, and we have our box, right? You're my master of this pay. You go through, you find their name, you punch however much they bought for that day, and then when their card's out, we email them, right? And we let them know that they need more money on their cards. So, NCS was very nice, they cut us a great deal, they made a bunch of these cards for us, and they've been a huge hit. I had a teacher email me and say, hey, can I buy a card as a birthday present for so-and-so? And I'm like, absolutely. Like, I thought that was a pretty cool way to do it. NCS also donated the cost of making these brochures for us. This was a new one we did this year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes. We thought, how cool would it be to have a hard copy brochure to get to our teachers? So, inside goes all of our menu, right? Your favorite, the lemonade. It has our prices, the teas, the coffees, and what's really cool is on the back, we did a little information about our program, about what we are, why we do it, and what is really the nice is we created a QR code that goes directly to our ordering system, because I know I have to look it up every single time. So, they got this, it's in our email, it's on our brochure, and it's just nice having a hard copy of everything. So, these are all wonderful things that we couldn't have done without our resources and within LP and in our community. And we continue to get people coming to us the more and more that people are hearing us. Huh? Yes, we see people in Walmart all the time, don't we? And they ask us what we're making, what we're buying, because they go to Walmart at least once a week, if not twice a week, to get supplies that is needed, right? So, do you wanna talk about that now, or you wanna wait?
I'll tell them.
You wanna talk about it now? Okay. This is what they're most excited for. Once we go through this, the other part, let me talk business really quick, and then you can go crazy. The thing we do is, again, student-led, to get all the skills that we need, like, this has really become our entire program. Not just timelines, but like, everything that we would want to do in transitions is during this time. We have our life skills, we have our communication skills, we have our work, our employment, everything that we need. They've also all obtained a certificate for food and safety handling. We all went through that program, too, and they all have a three-year certificate now that they have earned, that they can take with them. But through all of that, they go through, and each day, we count up chores and learning money skills, we do deposits, and the biggest thing that I feel like is they're learning the idea of a positive balance and a negative balance, and how we go through that. So, each day, we go through and we put in our debits, right? The money that we give out. And then our deposits is money that we...
Yep.
We get, correct?
Yep.
So, what Peyton is so excited to tell you all about is what we do once we are in the positive. Once we're in the black, we take our money and we go do what with it?
Spend it.
We spend it. Very good, Michael. But what do we spend it on?
Great America and Hollywood Theater.
That's what we're wanting on this year. What did we spend it on last semester? Where did we go?
Dave and Buster's.
We went to Dave and Buster's. So, we are, they are setting a goal of something they want, they research to see how much it's going to cost them, and then we put it up on the board. Right now, up on the board is how much, how much money, um, do you remember?
Four... Zero.
Four hundred, right? Four hundred dollars, because we weren't sure, wanted to go to Fright Fest in Great America, but we weren't sure we were gonna have enough money by the end of October before they close. So, Hollywood Palms is like a really cool movie theater that you get food served directly to you while you watch the movie.
And every popcorn drink could be a sibling, like, food, lunches, and drinks.
Right, they have, they serve it right to you at the seat, don't they?
Yeah, especially they have sodas, slushies, and snacks, and nachos, popcorns, and sodas.
They got everything, okay.
Every kinds of flavors you can drink and eat.
So, obviously, you can tell, we spent some time researching this place and came up with how much it was going to cost us to go and literally just enjoy ourselves. The whole point of this is many of our students are not fortunate enough to be able to get out of the area, and we want to give them all the skills that they need in order to go do this kind of stuff. So, getting out of the Illinois Valley and learning that there is more outside of our confines, there's more things to do and things like that, is pretty cool. And I can't think of a better way to spend our money. So, they definitely work their butts off for it, and any of the teachers are taking, uh-huh, uh-huh, because they see the lines that we serve at lunch. It's a little crazy, but it works, right? It's been very successful. So, that is this part that we go through. Oh, I didn't point out, this is the other thing they do, we do labeling. So, there's little, there's jobs filled in all areas, from small to creating labels and stuff, to baking the actual orders, to taking online, to counting money, to budgeting. It's everything. It's everything in one, and we're learning what it means to truly work a job. We're working four hours, four, four and a half hours, twice a week, straight, straight on, okay? Many of us don't get that opportunity otherwise to really know what it means to work. One hour here or there, that's not really working, you know, knowing what it means to stand on your feet, to do this, to take orders, to communicate with each other, and to be constantly going. So, I'm gonna stop talking, because I talk too much already, and I'm gonna let these guys tell you how they do it, like, what the true thing is. So, let me get my stuff out of the way. And you guys need to tell them the process of how this works.
Would you?
So, hang on. Peyton, you're up first. What happens first?
Um, so, I take the orders.
You take the orders.
And I, I punch card everybody, and I touch the bus, and I wait from the window, and I hold the card.
Hold it together, you're good. So, Peyton's saying, just so, in case some of you guys are having a hard time hearing her, the way it works, first thing in the morning, is we open up our computer and we pull up our online orders. And then, this month, it's Peyton and I. We rotate, third and fourth hour when we work with the teachers is our training time. That's when we rotate jobs, so that everybody learns all of the jobs. That's most important. Fifth hour, during the crazy time, yeah? That's you serving Mr. Spudick, right? Sorry. So, fifth hour is our lunch, we serve students during lunches, and that is our non-stop crazy time. So, we put everybody in their best seats, where they best work, so they can really show off their skills and be able to keep up with things. So, we rotate every month, different things. So, right now Peyton's up first, in the front. So, she takes care of anybody coming to the window, right? We have to take their order in person at the window, or we have to read the computer and translate that onto the order slips. And then the other thing you're responsible for, like you said, is finding the person's name of the punch cards, so that they go through the alphabet order to figure out where the names are. Find it out, put it in our POS system. This is another foundation grant, Purchase the Guide, and it has an actual, like a restaurant-style, a little simpler than some of them, but restaurant-style POS system, where you have to locate, you put it in, how many are you getting? It has where you can put in the bills, it gives it back, how much change you're gonna get back to them, so where we're going through all of those skills. So, Peyton's job is to get all of that done with all the online orders and manage whatever's coming to the window, right? And then, once we do that, then what do we do? Once we write down this orders on the slips, what happens? We give it to who? We give it to our baristas.
Baristas.
You're up. What do you do with it?
Well, what I do is make the drinks.
Right? What kind of drinks do you make? What are you best at?
I'm good at the coffee makers.
Yep. And the what? And the lattes?
And the lattes.
Right?
And every day, when I go out and do deliveries, I serve them, and every day, they gave me a tip to buy something like a punch card, or some real money. Yeah?
Right?
Yeah. And the best thing about lattes is when I make lattes, I add some, I add some ice to it.
We put, for an ice latte, it's ice, and then what do we have to do?
I pour into a cold coffee into it.
Right.
And then, when I add something like milk and some cooling syrup.
Right? We have lots of syrup choices, don't we?
And then, when it turns something like brown or...
It kind of looks like brown once we're done with it, huh?
It turns into a cold latte.
Right. So, we can do cold or hot lattes, so that's part of it, is understanding how to make the different drinks and knowing what we're doing. So, Eric is definitely my number-one barista. I really feel Eric could go work in a Dunkin' Donuts or a Starbucks right now and be very successful. Like, he is just so efficient and so good on it. So, you're up. Good job, Eric. Michael, you wanna tell what do you do? Go ahead, go around the picture. What is your specialty? What do you make?
Ricky Poop.
What's that? Lemonades, right? Yes, all about you, Mike. You're up. What we can do for you. So, Mike and Emma are on our teas and lemonades and our ice cups. Fifth hour, Emma is like our number-one person. We go through, we have been selling between 100 and 130 drinks just fifth hour during lunches. It has been out of this world, the number of drinks that we've been selling. So, Emma, what is your biggest thing you do fifth hour for us? You keep the what full? The ice.
Ice.
Uh, ice cups. Emma just keeps going, like, she just is constantly getting those ice cups. Somebody will yell out, Emma, I need an ice cup! She's handing them to everybody, and she's filling. She runs back and gets more ice out of the freezer when we need it, don't you?
Six to seven ice cups, or, you know, ice bags.
Yeah, we got to be like, seven, we did on Thursday, seven bags of ice that we're constantly doing. And then, sometimes you get to make the lemonades, right? The blue razz is our big number, and iced teas.
Iced teas.
Right? And then, Mike and Eric also do our deliveries. And like we said, third and fourth hour, the teachers have the option of either coming and picking up the drink or going out on deliveries. And again, that's another big skill in itself, maneuvering the building, being able to politely go in and out of rooms without disturbing, using manners, taking tips, managing the money, all of that kind of stuff. So, all right, did everybody talk about what they do?
Yeah.
So, it really is, for as new as we are, a very well-oiled machine, I will say. We changed our menu, we got a little slack, we went away from the caffeine, cappuccino drinks, and went to lemonades, flavored lemonades and iced teas, and that has been perfecto. There we go, that's a good word. And that has doubled our sales and number of drinks that we have done, almost to the point where they look at me like, are we done with? This is done, yes. I'm hungry, we're ready to be out of here, you know?
Yeah, very funny.
It, yes, you know, like Miss Nickershore said, sometimes she, she goes, it feels like Custer Night at Culver's when she used to work there, it's like that.
I have to say, you guys handle rushes a lot better than some of the employees here.
So, which is great, I mean, that adds a lot to how hard you guys work and what we are learning and doing and the skills that we can do. So, Anne, did I forget something? What's?
Right here.
Yes. Delivering to Ms. Lance. It's like Mike's highlight, is to bring Ms. Lance her...
Iced tea.
Iced tea.
With one splinter, an extra ice.
Yep, so, and that's the other thing, the teachers are so supportive and our administration, like, we have regulars, and they know when I say the name, oh, they want this, and they want that, and, you know, it's just like working any coffee shop, you get your regulars, you know what they want, we're answering their questions before they even get them done, so. But no, we're so happy we got to come here and tell you guys about tonight. We love our shop, don't we?
I love our shop.
We do, we really, really love it. And are very fortunate, and thank you.
Thank you.
Very blessed that we are able to do these things. What topic? Stay on topic. We can talk here later. All right.
Stay on topic, Mike.
Does anybody have any questions for these guys?
No.
I'm happy, I talk too much.
I think we're good.
No, but then ask people. I know you're good, so I'll let them ask you a question.
Are you open to the public? Are you open to the public?
No. So, can people outside of LP come order?
No.
No. If they come into the building, like, last year, they had the job fair, and we offered drinks to the people at the job fair, they were able to come up and do that. And we had a visitor from the ROE the other day that came into the school. He came up and ordered a drink while he was there, and was asking us questions and stuff, which was very great. So, in here we are, we made one guest appearance this year. Where did we go? We saw Mrs. Taliani there.
Yeah.
Dr. Obleski. And Mrs. Judas. Where did we go? To Lees. Lees. We were invited to Lees to showcase our program, to do that. That's something new Lees is trying to do this year, is bringing other programs in from all over the schools that they serve. So, that was probably our first adventure of hauling everything and doing stuff. I did have to laugh to myself, I said, and I was thinking about this on the way, when we started this last year, this one said, I think we need a food truck, Witt. Of course you do, Michael! People, we need a cart! This is when we were dreaming up our business. We need a cart, and we're gonna go to Peru, and we're gonna set up drinks! And it just, as I was thinking, like, going through my head, 'cause anybody that knows me, I overthink everything, but I was thinking, oh, my gosh, like, you might be right. This might be something we do. Right now, we are pretty happy just doing what we're doing, and we are trying to keep up with the Joneses with just what we got right now. But I will say, our teachers are getting more and more comfortable, and they're becoming creative. I have one teacher that came to me, she's offering as an incentive to our study hall for them to improve their grades. She's drawing names, and they get so many names in, and four people get to come down to order drinks. Renaissance is putting it on the goal cards as a perk. And so, more and more people, we're opening up to not just transition, but trying to make good job skills for other students in the building. And there's lots of, there's so much potential of what we can do and get it going, so.
Yeah.
The design you have on those aprons is beautiful. Have you thought of selling that on t-shirts?
That has been thrown around.
Okay. It just occurred to me, and I'm going, oh, my goodness, I would love that.
Yes, it has been thrown around as an idea.
And a lot of businesses like that...
Right.
Do...
They do, they do. You know, and this regularly...
Gear like that.
Good advertising.
What would be really cool is if we could find another transition program or student-led program that does do that business, and maybe we could cooperate with them. And doing that, so if anybody knows, most of my contacts do the coffee drinks, because that, like I said before, that's something that never, everybody always wants to drink, and you don't get tired of it, you can only buy some of these shirts. But no, we have thrown that around as idea of koozies, shirts.
Oh, yeah.
You know, just some garb that we could do, so, but no. We are still, sometimes it doesn't feel like we're new, but we really are very new. We really haven't got going since last February. We really haven't got going since last February. So it's only been from February to September, we're taking the summer off, that we have been doing this, so.
We're paying down a couple people there, picking up.
Considering yourself, as my speech, our new student will be coming and be part of us of our cap seven saver until, oh, two thousand twenty-four.
Who, what bud?
Our new student.
Our new student.
The ones you said about.
Oh, yes, we have different people that come in and help us, cause right now we're only four. Um, so Vanessa and I do more than what we would like to do, just to stay afloat. Ideally, I need six people, six students, and then we can step back and be more of the supervisors managing and stuff. So what Eric is talking about, we just reached out to a couple of people to come in and sub and, and help us out, especially during lunches. So that we're not so bolt.
How do these students feel about their future, learning all these skills?
What do you guys think? Do you, so she wants to know, do you think this is going to help you in the future, or do you think it's not good?
Um, it's good.
Why?
We can make more customers.
We learn customers.
In my coffee shop.
Right? You learn skills.
Yeah.
And all that kinda stuff. So it is gonna help you, even if you don't work in a coffee shop, just being able to handle the commotion. Right? I think it's good. What's your concern?
Mine is.
His concern's home, he's ready to be done. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Stress. It's all good, Mike. You're a good bud. Alright, anybody else have any questions for these guys?
No.
Cause you're doing a great job, you have been good work.
Well.
One more question.
Yeah, one more question in the back here. Have you been approached by other high schools?
They're transitioning to see what you guys are doing and maybe they're gonna introduce something to their schools.
Well, we did, I did just get, so we have what we call our Illinois Valley Transition Social Group. So all of the high school transition programs in the community, we get together quarterly and we're all very close with each other. Us teachers very close, the students are very close, and every one of us has some form of a thing. But I will say, PC heard us talk, yeah, some things not too long ago, and she called me up and said, "What's the lemonade recipe? What do you sell it for?" Because that has definitely been our money maker this year as the flavored lemonades. Um, we go through a bottle and a half of Blue Raz a week to two bottles a week. Um, so yeah, so we are getting, to answer your question, so we are getting some. Um, as the best teachers steal from each other, so, and share, so that is a lot of what our Valley group is. It's not only making connections for these guys socially, cause you never know where you're gonna end up living, or who you might need a roommate for. Um, but it also helps us teachers to do it. So that's Streeter, Ottawa, LP, PC, Hall. Um, with the, the five of us all get together regularly and talk consistently and help each other out. So, yeah, we're hoping to spread it, spread the love. Everybody should do it. In some form or fashion, so. Anything else?
No.
No? You guys good?
Yeah.
Alright, well, thank you very much for allowing us to come tonight.
Thank you very much.
And as considering yourself, we'll be starting by working on cap seven savers by tomorrow.
We, we are open tomorrow, yes.
We'll serve them by delivery and pickup.
So if you're ever in the building on a Tuesday, Thursday mornings, come see us, we'll get you a coffee.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Eric.
Oh, you're fine for now, they'll be up for the picture, he'll be up.
So they're housed in their dishwasher room in the commons.
Alright, thank you guys so much.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Somebody take charge. Okay, under finance. Any motion to approve the bills and payroll for LaSalle Pre-Township High School?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Any motion to approve the bills and payroll for the LP Career Center?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve, uh, the payroll report?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to prove the financial records as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Uh, under correspondence, uh, we have TIF reimbursements this month from the City of LaSalle, entered government agreement, TIFs, uh, eighty-four thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and seven cents. Uh, Village of North Utica, TIF one, thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and forty-one cents. Village of North Utica, TIF two, nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-four cents, for a total from Utica, forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifteen cents. Um, from the Village of Ogilvy, TIF four, first installment, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and one cent for a total reimbursement, TIF reimbursement for this month, one hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Okay, board committees, Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Ferrari?
Uh, Building and Grounds Committee met, uh, last Monday in the, uh, Herbers, Herbalshimer, uh, Alumni Room. We got updates on the, uh, summer projects, including of course, the LP Sports Complex Phase Two. Uh, we can report that the tennis courts are done, soccer field is done, and as of last Monday, the bathrooms for the soccer field were nearly done. Uh, there are a couple of change orders that are going to be items for action on tonight's agenda under, uh, ten point nine totaling less than sixty-five hundred dollars. The nurses' office renovation has been completed. Uh, there's still some work to be done on the auto shop Phase Two renovation. The storm drainage piping repair in the east building is almost done as of last Monday. And, uh, there's still work going on on the main building exterior door replacement. Statements of completion or of occupancy have been approved regarding the, uh, some, some of these projects, and that will also be mentioned later in the report under new business. There was discussion about a possible property acquisition, which the full board will take up in the closed session. Uh, there was a, just a general overlook of health, life and safety, uh, issues and projects for the next two or three fiscal years. Just a general overview. Bids have been pushed back on the Dolan Building elevator replacement, uh, but that should be taking place shortly. There was some initial, uh, discussion and review of some designs for renovations of the old tennis courts just outside of the main building here. Um, replacing a couple of the tennis courts with pickleball courts and the other courts being renovated and, uh, resurfaced. And that's, that's a project for, uh, probably fiscal year twenty-four or twenty-five, but it's down the road a bit. Uh, there's a discussion about, uh, activity bus replacement. Uh, it looks like one might become available later this fall. They are working on that. And, uh, there was discussion about the baseball field name recommendation, and that is going to be an action item for the board under item ten point three of new business this evening. There was an interesting, uh, recognition of the work that was done on the Howard Fellow Stadium. Uh, we, uh, the project received, uh, some, uh, distinguished recognition by other builders, you know, who do similar projects and that. Uh, the work that was done on Howard Fellow Stadium, uh, won, won an award and there's going to be a, there was a plaque that's going to go in the Alumni Room and another one that's gonna be attached to, uh, a prominent place in the stadium itself.
This last summer's work?
Yeah, the, the, well, the, overall, the.
Football field.
The football field, the, the turf.
But not just la, not just what we did last summer?
Right.
It's the whole project?
The whole project.
Okay. Yeah.
Under other, um, Chiller Number Two was under repair. Uh, there was, uh, a walkthrough for health, life, safety, which is done annually. Was supposed to take place later in the week last week, so I'm sure we'll get a report on that being completed. There was, uh, some work being done on the transition house. Uh, a tree was taken down and repair of some gravel in the driveway. And that pretty much covered it.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ferrari. Uh, Finance Committee, Mr. Murbach?
Well, Mr. Ferrari covered eighty-nine percent of our committee meeting, but that's okay, I'll go through it. We met on Tuesday, September twelfth, and, uh, that was the last meeting for Lori and the first meeting for Jennifer. So Jennifer was introduced to our committee and we, she helped, uh, us through that whole meeting and learned the ins and outs a little bit and a little bit about what that's gonna be about. And because of that fact, the monthly financials, as you probably noticed in your packet, aren't really in there in the same format that we had in the past. The reason for that is to allow, um, was to allow Lori to help Jennifer during the transition to get two months worth of work on that. Does that make sense? I mean, so we'll be getting, getting those later. But, uh, that really sounded like a good plan to me. That gives her a little more expertise, a little more time to, to get that nailed down. So obviously, we do recommend for approval the, the district budget, which is on the agenda, and we had the hearing for earlier. We also discussed the, uh, potential property acquisition and recommend approval of the statements of completion and all that stuff regarding the LP Sports Complex. Um, also talked about the health, life, safety, three-year look ahead and the update on that, and we got an update on the activity bus replacement. Um, basically, we think that's gonna be closer to about a hundred and ten thousand for one, and it's gonna take months to find one and, and get one, we think. So it's, it's just, that's the way it goes. That's the inventory and everything that's going with it. And then, uh, one fi, final item of, uh, discussion was, um, we, is being announced the latest school maintenance grant application, which is a fifty thousand dollar matching grant, and so we'll be submitting once again for some improvements throughout the school. I believe that's it, unless anybody else on the committee has anything to add.
Anybody have questions? Thank you, Ms. Murbach. Ministerated reports, Superintendent Dr. Oblesky.
Thank you, Mr. Sarver. Uh, I'm gonna start first with the results of our annual health, life, safety inspection that Mr. Ferrari referenced. Uh, overall, we had a, a very, very positive review. I wanna give, uh, kudos to Mr. Tom Vanello and his team. You know, we just, we, we regularly get, not only from the ROE, but even visitors, uh, into the building. Alumni groups, uh, particularly, uh, reference this as well about just the, the qual, how immaculate the building is. There are, there were two items that were identified that we have to, to, uh, repair or remediate. Um, one is over in the Dolan Building on some of the, uh, the doors, actually, maybe the side panels, that they are, they're kind of covered right now with, um, uh, I don't know, construction paper or whatever it is. But we need to have, if there's glass available to be able to see through, there has, the code says there has to be a hundred square inches of, of at least a see-through area to see into the classroom. So, um, that's an easy fix, we're gonna take care of that. Um, the other one that'll be a, a little more intensive though, Anne, is when we did the renovations, it's always funny, like when you, when you do major projects, there's always things that were there, but then, okay, well, why didn't we put them back? Um, we have to reinstall emergency lights in the east gym.
Um. Really?
Yes. So that was part of the things, when we renovated it, it was one of the things that got missed in terms of putting lights back on. So anyways, we're in the process of taking care of that. Um, that is it. Overall, it was just a, a very, very positive walkthrough, uh, that particular day. I also included in the packet, last month, I shared with you the, uh, summary of the action items of the one-twenty promise that the Super Intents Council did a, uh, an assessment on or review during the summertime to give a progress report. And we had talked about last month of giving a more in-depth presentation today. What I'm proposing is to modify that. Um, as I put in the, um, in my report, Mr. Sarver and I have been in, in discussion about getting a board retreat, uh, scheduled that would be facilitated by our IASB Field Service Rep. And what we've done in the past is usually the morning would be with the Field Service Rep, myself, the board, um, and that would be a facilitated process. Um, and then what we've done in the past is the, the, the second part of the day would be sort of a retreat conversation with the administrative team. And what I'm proposing is at that point, we would be able to have a more in-depth conversation of just sort of the status of where we are with the one-twenty promise. The other thing too, that we've done is at our, at our most recent Super Intents Council, we went through and we're making, we made recommendations of in each of the four pillars, um, up to two action items that we felt are real priority areas, uh, that we want to, um, uh, present to the board. So we also want to be able to streamline this, give you recommendations, uh, to review. Um, but we're also working with the staff on developing formal district slash school goals. And so we wanna use that time to be able to present those to, to the board as well. So it's really, a lot of things are really kinda tying together very nicely, and we're, we're very excited about the, the impact that we believe is going to have on, continue to help focus our, our, our efforts. The, uh, on the topic of facilities, this is school safety, we were the host site, uh, earlier this week for a site safety Ministers Academy workshop. And it was, it was a really good workshop. We have a, members of our Super Intents Council that make up, uh, members of our ad hoc security team. Um, involve some of our building administrators, um, Nick Martin, uh, is part of that as well. Uh, and we had other represent, other, other administrators from other area schools that were here for this as well. Basically, the gist of it is, is it was a, our building was used as a case study to be able to do an, uh, a site assessment of where we see, um, security strengths as where we see some security weaknesses based on national standards for school safety. Um, we had, uh, two administrators that are, been trained as, as national experts that they, they go around to, to schools around, around the state doing these presentations, and there were a, a number of things that we identified, and that will be shared at the next month's, uh, Buildings and Grounds Committee with some recommendations that we're going to be, uh, making for, um, uh, some additional improvements, uh, to strengthen our, our security procedures. So we're, we're very much looking forward to that. And then next month, we have, Mr. Damon West is gonna be coming as our guest speaker. Uh, that'll be October twenty-fifth, and that'll be after, that'll, we'll have the board meeting before that, so there'll be more, more to, to speak on that. Um, that's all I have, unless there are questions.
No questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Oblesky. Principal Port, Mrs. Cushing.
Good evening, everyone. I have a rather lengthy report, it seems like this week, but, um, don't worry, I'm not going to review all of those. Um, I'll just highlight a few that I think are of, uh, very significant, uh, items there. Um, the instructional leadership team, our ILT, ILT team has been, um, meeting, um, and we've discussed quite a few things, um, to, to try to make the, the school function a little bit better, so, um, just wanted to update you and let you know that we've got after-school tutoring, uh, tutoring running. Uh, we've been working a lot on the PLC process. I know Dr. Oblesky's been referencing that as well, but our group has been, um, working on those items as well. Um, a few other things, assessment information, we hear about that in the public as well. We're offering our testing for juniors. Um, uh, that will happen in October. Um, we're also offering testing for our eighth graders. We're also offering testing for our eighth graders. It's changed to a digital format, so that's caused a little bit of shift in how registration happens. But currently, we're, we're hitting our about 200 mark almost for registration, which is pretty much in line, even though the, the change has happened to digital. So things are looking pretty good, but I wanted to be aware of that happening in our school. Drills also, we're, we're right on track. We've had two fire drills that have been very successful. We've also had our bus evacuation drill and have the rest of our drills all, all scheduled and ready to go there. In line with what you saw today, we got to celebrate this morning students as well. We had our first student of the month breakfast, so I just would highlight that was also a very happy way to start the morning, and I got to end the day, too, with student, student celebration there. So we're, we're off and running with lots of good things here. Does anyone have any questions about Rite Share or Higher?
Thank you, Mrs. Cushing. Athletic Director's Report, Mr. Hanson.
Good evening. Been a busy month for athletics here at La Salle-Prou. It's hard to believe we're at the midpoint of the fall season already. This is week five of football, so over the last three weeks, we've had three home games, and we've hosted many guests. So we've had senior night, youth tackle, football night, little kickers night, and the junior high band here over the last three weeks. So we've been very, very busy this week. We're on the road in football, so it's been busy, but we're, we're doing well. We're obviously three and one, have a good chance at some success down the road here. So volleyball's off to a great start. They're past the midpoint of their season. They're 15 and three, won again last night on the road. So I think they're three and one in conference, looking good. Won a tournament in Rock Falls a couple of weeks ago, so that's going well. Golf will be the first fall sport to probably end their season as they enter their regionals next week already. So both boys and girls will have competed in the regional by Wednesday of next week, which is, is really, really early. But we wish them well as they head to Sycamore, both of them are in Sycamore next week, Tuesday and Wednesday. We got, we got some big things common in tennis. We got a big tournament this weekend. We host the IHJV tournament the week later up at the new complex, which is getting rave reviews. I mean, the visitors are just in awe when they're there, so it's very, very nice. And then next Tuesday's a, a big night here. It's our Pink Night for volleyball. We host St. B. It should be a huge crowd and looking to raise some money for Cops for Cancer. So that is the month in review of athletics, but any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Director of the Area Career Center, Mr. Minkin.
Good evening, everyone. You saw in your report, we started off the year with actually a record high since I've been here, 387 students. We budgeted at 390, so this budget this year will be in the black in terms of that. We are getting ready to another always exciting time with aviation back and running. Mr. Zaiman, we, we got the final parent permission slips in and everything, so they'll be starting flights pretty soon out there at the airport with, with Mr. Zaiman, who has done that in the past for us as well. Our Students of the Month, as you saw in the first newsletter, Orlando Harris of Putnam County. But this month, coming out next week in the newsletter, you'll see three LP students, Kayla Fisher, Madeline Kozeski, and Elise O'Brien. Just three phenomenal kids that I collectively refer to them as Flo, Marion Shirley. But they're definitely much more, they're just lovable kids that are phenomenal at what they do in that early childhood education class, always a positive attitude. Couldn't ask for better kids to come into that and start working with those little ones in a little bit. Another nice round of increases in community support and, and industry support from us, as you saw. Got some upcoming field trips, but one of those, for instance, the one with Vector and our welding and machining classes is fully sponsored by the, the corporations. They're paying for all the transportation, everything. Our kids get to see four different things and hear about their opportunities for internships and stuff. So just real nice outreach from the community to offer that to us. Within the past couple of weeks, have also been approached by First State Bank to offer, to sponsor our two scholarships and specifically Student of the Month stuff and specifically for the kids in the trades. So it's just real nice to see the community supporting those programs. And just things that didn't make it in here, be aware, this Sunday is our auto show, so come on out and see Mr. Fisher put on a great day. This Friday, we're, for lack of creativity, we're having hot dog day at the Career Center, so the students will be getting T-shirts and culinary arts students will be putting their food handlers licenseings to, to use, serving the other students hot dogs and chips and things like that. And then, other than that, we, things are going good so far. I hope there's any questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin. Director of Communications, Mr. Baker.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I guess I can break on some of the things that we just heard tonight. As Mrs. Cushing talked about safety drills that we've been forming, one of the pieces that we're kind of rolling out this year after Dr. Bluski and we were talking last year is really improving our family and kind of community awareness of some of those activities that we, that we do to enhance safety in the building and provide that security for students and staff. So after each of those drills, we're now sending messages home to families so that they're getting simple reports on, on what happens and a little bit of why, so that they know what we're doing. It'll spend a nice piece, because as I mentioned last month, we, since then, conducted kind of one of our quarterly check-ins with our families, kind of a blast message, a test of our system to say, hey, here's how we send messages out. If you're not receiving messages through either a phone call, a text, or an email, we might not have the right contact information from you. It was nice that that works, but then the fact that we're sending out all these other messages on other topics, it's, I think, pushing more parents to, to reach out and say, hey, you know, I'm getting this text, it says to check my email. I never get the emails. So we're finding issues. Usually it's something to, when they register, there's a typo in, in an address or a bad phone number, something like that. It's really improved with how we're connecting with our families. Another piece, just to remind everyone that coming up on Monday is the LP Foundation's Family Dinner Night at the Wright Spice. So that's for $12. You can either get a chicken strip meal or their spaghetti meal. So yeah, please, if you've got the time tonight, come out and join the foundation and help support a good cause. And then right not long after that, we'll be getting, well, I already have Sheri to pay for my office all the time because the Harlem Wizards are coming back to LP, as we've said, and that's coming up very soon. So they're very busy getting all that ready right now. So that's all the big stuff right now, aside from what's in my notes.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Under new business, the budget, Mr. Bluski?
Yeah.
Dr. Bluski.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sarver. Couple of things I, I, that the school code requires, this was a couple, a couple of years ago, as far as additional information that we have to present at the board meeting, specifically I have to share publicly our bank gain fund balances. And so I just want to take a moment to do that. And then there's just a couple of highlights within the budget that I want to, to point out as well. Before I get to that, though, I do want to express appreciation to Mrs. Jennifer Doz. She's jumped right in, and there's already some skillsets I've been able to see with the magic she can do with Excel. So very excited already about some of the enhancements that we're going to be able to do as far as, as far as the budget development. So I wanted to publicly thank her as well. And of course, want to thank Lori for all the support that she has provided as well. You have a copy of the, our budget at your, at your packet. I'm looking at really the first page, it's really kind of the budget summary is what I want to really speak to. There are nine fund balances in the district budget, starting with our, our education fund balance. We are beginning the year with $7,733,191. Operations and maintenance, $2,731,604. Debt service, $226,394. Transportation, we're starting the fund balance of $1,178,828. Fund 50, which is our IMRF Social Security, Capital projects, if you recall, this is where we, we transferred a number of the, the money from the bond sale back in the springtime, where we're paying down the, the various projects that we're currently working on. Sports complex, we've got the, the Howard Fellow Stadium repairs come from the springtime, to name two. Working cash, we have a starting fund balance of $6,932,767. And that will also be spent down as well. We've got some planned transfers that will be tied in with our projects for this fiscal year as well. Not all the way down, but there'll be money that'll be transferred over. Tort, we're starting with $59,334. And then fire and prevention safety fund 90, which is health, life, safety. We're starting with a fund balance of $899,355 there. We are, we are projecting by the end of the fiscal year to end ultimately with a, a positive balance. But I do want to point out, though, that there are, we do have two of our fund balances. We are intentionally structuring deficits. We are in our transportation. We've allocated about an additional $145,000 that we're going to spend down in the reserves in transportation for the activity bus and driver's ed car, which is, which is planned. And then in our operations and maintenance, we are transferring $300,000 from working cash into the, into the O and M fund that would be in anticipation of a possible purchase of a house. But I point that out, though, is that when you transfer working cash into one of the operating funds, the state budget does not recognize that as direct revenue. So that's why the, the O and M fund is going to look like it has deficits. According to the state planner, it does, but at the end of the day, any fund balances, we're not. But I just wanted to, to point that out for you as you look through that. And then, and then, and then also the educational fund, we made some adjustments from the tentative. We had more, all of our staff members that made their final lane changes on the salary schedule, which are our teachers. We made those adjustments, and we also had to shift some of our CPPRT money over into Fund 50 based on the formula that our auditor gave, that there's a certain, based on what your fund balance is in Fund 50, you have to have a certain amount that you allocate from CPPRT to that. And so that's where that, that balance was drawn down a little bit at the, at the, for the final budget. Are there any questions? Overall, we're presenting what we feel is a pretty, pretty solid budget.
Okay.
Doz, anything else you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. Thanks.
I need a motion to approve and adopt the La Salle Plutanship High School Fiscal Year 2024 Budget.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pachetl?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve to adopt La Salle-Prou area career center Fiscal Year 2024 Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Pachetl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the Resolution 2024-4, which reads, which reads as, "Resolution, be it resolved by the Board of Education of La Salle School District, 120 Counties La Salle Bureau, State of Illinois, as follows. Whereas the Board of Education values the history and reputation of La Salle-Plutanship High School and takes great care to determine whether any room or facility shall be named in honor of an individual or family. And whereas, Mr. Hubert "Hubie" Sarver honorably served LP as a teacher and coach from 1965 until his retirement in 1993. And whereas, Coach Sarver coached baseball for 26 years, basketball for 12 years, football for two years, compiled a record of 431 and 244 in his 24 years as head baseball coach. Coach Sarver's teams won nine conference titles, four district titles, seven regionals, and reached the IHSA state quarterfinals. And whereas, because the community did not have a summer baseball program, Coach Sarver established the Illinois Valley-Konny Mack Summer Baseball League for students aged 16 to 17, served as Northern Illinois Chairman for the Illinois Baseball Coach Association, and was an active member of the City of Prou Planning Commission dedicated to improving opportunities for our youth. Now therefore, be it resolved that the newly constructed varsity baseball field located at the LP Sports Complex shall now and forever be named Hubie Sarver Field to be, to honor the memory and service of Coach Sarver. And be it further resolved that the resolution be incorporated into the minutes as a permanent record and that the original be presented to the Sarver family with deep appreciation. Adopted this 20th day of September, 2023. I need a motion to accept the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Merbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Pachetl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarver?
Yes.
I need both.
You want me to drive, that might not be something you want to put on that side.
Never a dull moment. I need a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-5 I need a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-5 honoring Mr. Tom Kowalski, which reads as follows. Resolution, be it resolved for the Board of Education, School District Number 120, Counties of La Salle Bureau, State of Illinois, as follows. Whereas the Board of Education deeply appreciates and celebrates the generous financial support and encouragement of innovation ignited by Mr. Tom Kowalski, LP Class 1957. And whereas, Mr. Kowalski's foundation has donated over $500,000 transforming the career technical education, CTE programs, in our building trades, machining, welding, electricity, engineering, and fire science programs in the ACC wing. And whereas, Mr. Kowalski has energized and inspired our CTE instructors by providing state-of-the-art equipment and training, which is now directly impacting the learning of our students. And therefore, be it resolved, that La Salle Prue Township High School Board of Education expressed its deepest appreciation gratitude to Mr. Tom Kowalski for his exceptional generosity and unwavering support, which has significantly contributed to the advancement of LP's vision, mission, and beliefs. And be it forever further resolved, that this resolution be adopted as a symbol of our appreciation and be incorporated into the minutes as a permanent record, and that the original be presented to Mr. Tom Kowalski. Adopted this 20th day of September, 2023. I need a motion to accept the resolution."
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-5 approving the appointment of Miss, Mrs. Jennifer Doz, Business Manager, as IMRF Authorized Agent.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion to approve for the approval of the 2023-2024 School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding for $53,798.40.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the Fiscal Year 2023 Salary Compensation Report.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the Fiscal Year 2023 IMRF Compensation Report.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for, for approval of the following change orders with team and builders, soccer building in addition. A, change order number one, soffit lighting, $4,965.80. And B, change order number two, soccer field scoreboard electrical, $1,419.96 for a total of $6,385.76.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of following applications of occupancy and statements of completion. A, main building, main academic building, amendment number 80, which is abatement, plumbing, doors, lights, and quad additional cost. B, main academic building, amendment number 82, seal coat, 1927, east fac- facade, facade, sorry. C, main academic building, amendment number 83, boilerhouse masonry restoration. And D, Dolan Building Amendment Number Nine, HVAC replacement, windows, and door replacement.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion of approval for the following applications of occupancy. A, main academic building nurses' office. B, main academic building video stream, video streaming. C, auto shop amendment number 87, items four, eight, and nine. That's masonry restoration, stairs, and sidewalk restorations, and lintel repair. D, Dolan Building network, network, infrastructure. And E, east gym pool filter replacement.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the 2023-2024 school profile?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval to revise the District Organizational Chart Policy 3.30.
So moved.
Second.
No, uh, yeah, Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the following resignations. Mrs. Jill Fonte, Greeter, Security, effective November 3rd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Telliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need approval for the following appointments. A, Mr. Joshua Wooden, permanent substitute teacher, effective September 21st, 2023, for the 23, 2023, 2024 school year, replace Ms. Quincy Weber. B, Mr. Chad Arnett, volunteer basketball coach, effective for the 2023, 2024 school year. C, Mr. Kyle Pyattell, Green Team Club Sponsor, effective for the 2023, 2024 school year, replaces Ms. Kate Lance. D, Mrs. Christine Thiesinger, Foreign Language Club Sponsor, effective for the 2023, 2024 school year, replace Mr. Nathan Burdo.